Good evening, everyone. It's 6:15 and our agenda says we start at 6:15. And I'd like to try to keep us on topic and on track because we have a lot of excellent speakers this evening. They're all prepared to share a lot of information with you tonight. And I just hope, I want to make sure we give them as much time as we can because we're going to end this no later than 8:30 this evening. Because I know everybody has a busy schedule and needs to get to work in the morning, et cetera. First of all, I'd just like to, excuse me, right there. So I just want to say, first of all, my name's Joe Paula. I'm the 2018 mayor for the city of Cloverdale. This is my third time serving as mayor, my 12th year on the city council. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking the Citrus Fair, Katie Young, who's with us this evening, right there, for allowing us to use this wonderful facility. I really appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Ron and Jane Pervelka, as well as the city of Cloverdale, for all those wonderful refreshments. There's a lot of food there, so please, during this presentation, get up, go back, help yourself, eat, and then eat again, and then eat again. There's a lot of food there. I got to tell you, we were hoping for a lot more people. Unfortunately, I'd learnt just this evening that there's a Little League award ceremony taking place at Papa's Pizza at 6 o'clock. I think that may have impacted somewhat. Couple that with a Warriors game that started at 6 o'clock, unbeknownst to us, but that, I'm sure, hurt us. And the last thing is the Cloverdale Food Pantry, they have their Christmas in June fundraiser, and it's an excellent fundraiser. And if you haven't had an opportunity to get over there, you still have plenty of time to make a donation. I really encourage you to do that. Outstanding service for those in need within our city. I'd like to take the time and just thank all our guest speakers tonight, and we're going to be introducing them as we go down. We have our city manager, David Kelly, right over there. David, raise your hand. Thank you. And then we have our superintendent of schools, Jeremy Decker. Thank you for being here. And we have our 4th district supervisor and current year chairman of the Board of Supervisors, just been re-elected by Landside, James Gore. Thank you, James, for being here. And thank you for all you do for the North County and Cloverdale. So appreciate it. We have our CEO, Nina Hanchard, who's here. Nina, thank you for the chamber. We have Debbie Howell from the Alexander Valley Wellness Center, who's going to talk about that. We have our Fire District Chief, Jason Jenkins, here. Jason, thank you so much for being here. Katie Young, our new CEO for the Citrus Fair, and she's going to speak a little bit about the fair. Katie, thank you so much. And Robert Redford with the History Center, and the, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. I'd like to take a minute and introduce my colleagues on the city council. And unfortunately, our vice mayor couldn't be here. She really wanted to be here, but she had this long-planned, well-earned vacation, Carol Russell. So she's back in New York. But we are filming this, and she plans to watch it several times, I'm sure. And so Carol, I hope you're having a great vacation, well-earned. Also, Melanie Bagby, city council member, she's up in Sacramento. She serves on one of the League of California City's policy committees. And unfortunately, that meeting was today, this evening. She's up there, and she was unable to attend. Again, she plans to watch this. We have council member Gus Walter. Gus, please stand and just be recognized. Thank you so much for being here. And thank you for all your hard work on behalf of our city. And last thing, I don't know if council member Mary Ann Brigham is in the house. I don't see her, but I know she sends her regards as well. So with that, I'd like to let you know that we're going to have no time for questions after each speaker. So I encourage you to make notes, but at the end of the presentation, there's a microphone right there, and everybody that has a question will have an opportunity to ask whichever speaker you want to ask the question of. If we run out of time and you have questions, you could easily reach out to the individual speaker at a later date, and I'm sure they'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and start and introduce city manager David Kelly. David, after you're done, if you would just introduce the next speaker, in this case, and he's right next to you, and it's going to go right down the line, and it's going to end right here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, and Mayor Paula. I do want to make one comment, that the presentations tonight are being videotaped, and the videotape will be available after it's edited and will be posted on YouTube. So you'll have the opportunity to find the link on the city of Cloverdale's website and share the link with folks that may want to view the presentation from their computer. So tonight, I'm going to take a little bit of time, just give a background overview, kind of what got us here today, and then talk about the future and where we're heading. As many of you know, starting really in the late 80s to early 90s, there was a number of jobs that were lost in Northern California, particularly related to the decline and the scale-back of the timber industry, which really resulted in closure and the reduction in jobs in Cloverdale, because we did rely heavily on some of the lumber mills around here for jobs. You know, to compound that issue, Highway 101 was relocated. As probably many of you know, most of the traffic used to be funneled through, right through downtown and right through town. And of course, that, those vehicle traffics did help to generate business activity. So with the relocation of Highway 101, we no longer got the benefit of some of those vehicle stops that we benefited from as they were either heading north or south. You know, following on that, the city did some really hard work to put in place some good planning. There was a number of projects that were approved, one of which was Clover Springs, that helped bring some really needed residential development to the city. But you know, not long after that, of course, in 2005, you know, we had the pretty significant economic crash, housing market decline, and what we all know as the Great Recession. That lasted for a number of years and kind of culminated with the loss of redevelopment. The city of Cloverdale had a redevelopment agency that was utilized to help fund new business activity. There was a number of facade improvements in terms of, you know, in buildings in downtown. But also, we lost a vital source of funding for affordable housing. And the loss of redevelopment is something we're still reeling from today. Of course, it not only affected Cloverdale, it affected a number of other cities and also Sonoma County. Really, the impact of all that loss in economic activity resulted in a fairly significant loss in the number of staff at the city of Cloverdale. We lost anywhere from about 16 to 20 staff if you total up between the part-time and full-time positions. And really, what that means is that there was a reduction in services to all of you as the residents and business owners in our community. And we really haven't returned from that loss in staff. We've only added a few positions incrementally over time. So with that said, you know, and what we've started to really see, and I think staff and the city council in particular, has been really hard at work to try to bring new businesses to Cloverdale and new jobs. I want to acknowledge Supervisor Gore's assistance in helping us to annex New Forest. New Forest is a mill property on the easterly side of the town, adjacent to the Russian River. We were able to preserve 75 well-paying jobs by bringing New Forest into town and enabling them to annex and get city services. And it was really a job-saving effort that required a partnership between our city council and the Board of Supervisors and LAFCO. So I certainly think Supervisor Gore, because he was a real partner in that effort. Some of the other things that staff's doing to really try to bring jobs to the community, we continue to work with a private company called Diablo Commercial Properties. They're the property owners for the Alexander Valley Resort property. We are actively working with them. They've had a number of investors looking at the property. City staff and council has met with some of those investors to talk about some of the issues around future development. And we see that project is something that is going to be coming forward in the coming years. But we're continuing to work with them on addressing some of the planning issues around that. One important project, and I know Debbie Howell's going to talk about it more specifically today, is we've been working on what we refer to as the Times Square property. And the Times Square property is really this vacant piece of property that just sits outside here at the Citrus Fair. It's just a little under five acres. And what we have currently planned for the site includes a new wellness center, which I know Debbie's going to talk about, as well as a site, a parcel for a new public safety or police station. And we're really excited by our planning efforts. But, and last but not least, it also includes a location and site for a new proposed skate park, and I'll touch on that briefly. In addition to Times Square and Alexander Valley Resort, there's a couple of projects that just wanted to touch on. Right now, many of you know, on Treadway Drive, you see a fairly large construction project underway. That's what we refer to as the Vine Ridge Assisted Living Facility. That's a 51-bed unit, a bed development project that will provide for assisted living for seniors in our community. And from our understanding, there's really a real need for it. And that project's anticipated to be complete with construction at the end of this year or early next year. So you'll see that completed. Another project that we are engaging in and discussions with is annexation of a property to the, on the south side of town, where there was previously some wood processing activities. This is a parcel that's just south of the Renner Gas Station, Fueling Station. It's being planned for a proposed 92,000-square-foot warehouse for wine storage facilities. And that's in the planning process now. It'll be coming to council in the near future for discussion about annexation. And subject to the council's support for that project, you'll see it going through the planning process. So that's something to kind of keep your eye on. In working with the project sponsors, we understand that wine storage facility is really vital for supporting our local wine industry, because they're really looking for the need to have storage facilities for their wine product. One of the kind of exciting elements that our Public Works and staff is working on is in regards to park and recreation facilities. We recently completed two community workshops to garner input on, you know, one of our prized gems, City Park on Second Street. And we have currently a draft master plan that will be coming to council for review and finalization, that master plan is intended to guide, you know, future improvements at City Park over the next 10 to 20 years. And I think the master plan that we've put together is really reflective of the community's needs and desires for recreational amenities in the city. Of course, they did mention the new skate park. We are trying to finalize an agreement with a skate park designer called Spawn Ranch to prepare plans for the new skate park. We've heard from the youth in the community, and some maybe that aren't considered youth, that really desire to have opportunities for skating. And that, again, is located, the proposed site is just outside our door here, next to our school site. Last but not least, in terms of parks and recreation, you may be aware that in partnership with the Sonoma County Open Space District, the city was able to acquire a 250-acre open space property located just due west of Skyview Drive. We are, have been working really closely with the Sonoma County Trails Council on development of some new trails. So there's going to be really some great hiking opportunities. What we're calling the park is the Porterfield Open Space Preserve or Open Space. And what you probably have seen is that some construction activity at the trailhead on Skyview Drive. We're installing some dedicated parking along the street itself, as well as drinking fountains, bicycle parking facilities, and some trailhead signage. And so it's going to be a really nice access point to be able to walk in that beautiful piece of property. And I'll certainly encourage you to take a walk if you haven't already. We are anticipated to complete construction of some of the bridges across, you know, two of those tributaries on Porterfield Creek, really in the next month, a month and a half. Once those are done, of course, we hope to have a grand opening for that park, or open space property. But we think it's going to provide some nice opportunities for walking and hiking and seeing nature. One of the things that we've identified that's really important for the future of Cloverdale is, as I mentioned earlier, is a new public safety police station. The current station, if you haven't seen it, it was, you know, it's fairly dated. It was previously used as the primary fire station for the city, and now, of course, houses our police department. It is, has been determined to be, you know, seismically unsafe, and it really doesn't meet the current Department of Corrections standards for, you know, housing folks. And it's, you know, it's fairly inefficient building, and it's got a number of just general building and structural issues. And it's something that, over the near future, we'll encourage you to talk to our police chief about tours of that, so you can kind of get a feel for, you know, why that building is inadequate to meet not only our current needs, but our future needs. So what we're working on is, right now, a new design for a new public safety building that totals around 12,000 square feet. Really, what this is intended to be is a essential building, a central services building that, you know, withstands any earthquakes and is a safety building that will serve the community for the next 40 to 50 years. And one of the key elements that we're designing into the police station is a new community room. We hope to be able to, you know, support our efforts to continue community policing in Cloverdale, but also provide a space for community groups to be able to, you know, utilize and, you know, host groups, you know, right there next to our police department. In the next two to three years, one thing to kind of keep your eye on is our city budget. The city, earlier in mid-May, held a budget workshop. One of the items that the council considered funding and voiced unanimous support for was funding an outside consultant to develop a 10-year financial forecast. One of the things that we really want to try to achieve for the city is to ensure that we have a strong financial program going forward, do that analysis, and ultimately develop strategies to ensure that the city is, you know, on a strong financial footing, because we have a number of local economic issues that we know we need to address. As I mentioned earlier, we know that Governor Brown eliminated redevelopment. And one of the impacts of that loss of redevelopment was a clawback of some loan funds. That means that the city has to pay $1.3 million back to the state of California. And we want to figure out an appropriate financial strategy to pay that money back over time, which that final payment is due in 2038. So we want to make sure we have a strategy in place to do that. Also, as part of the recession, you know, the city's, as I mentioned, the city's financial standing was really significantly impacted. You know, it was really bare bones in terms of staff. Luckily, the voters of the city agreed to pass Measure O. This was a utility user tax that, you know, ultimately will sunset on January 1st of 2022. But that measure provided a vital source of funding that totals about $450,000 annually. And that is really a significant, critical amount of revenue that helps support, you know, basic city operations, including funding our police department and park improvements. So that's something that we're going to have to tackle and make sure we're prepared to address. And again, one of the reasons why we want to look at this 10-year financial forecast is see what the impact of that loss looks like on the overall budget. Of course, as I mentioned, we also need to look at the, how do we finance the, a new police station? Our preliminary budget estimates indicate that a new police station costs between $13 and $14 million. That's a really significant capital investment. Anytime a city undertakes a capital investment of that type, we usually look to a financing mechanism. One of the tools that we're looking at is a very low-interest USDA loan. Of course, you get great terms at low interest, but that does mean that you have debt service, principal and interest on that loan over time. Just on a $10 million loan, which we've been preliminary-approved for, we're still looking at debt service of around $400,000 a year. So again, kind of tying that back to the need to do that financial forecast, to assess how we're going to pay for that, because we do understand that that's a critical piece of public infrastructure that we want to fund. You know, in terms of public safety, I do want to touch on one aspect of the overall staffing and operations for the police department. Our council recently reviewed a staffing plan that was prepared by Chief Kramer. I want to acknowledge Chief Kramer's presence in the back of the room. Chief put together a very detailed staffing plan that is available on our website, and it was in a recent council agenda packet. One of the things that was identified as important was to, again, establish a management and organizational structure for the police department, which included a lieutenant position and two sergeants. And the city council did approve and recommend that staffing plan. Again, so that'll be part of something we'll want to look at as part of our 10-year financial forecasts, is how do we, how do we fund the ongoing operations of the police department, given the potential loss of Measure O revenue and paying back this loan to the state? Of course, as I mentioned, we have a desire to implement the park master plan that we hope to approve for City Park. The cost, the full implementation of that plan is in the neighborhood of $20 million. Of course, that's a, that's a long-term, again, master plan. But over time, we'd like to see, you know, those amenities improved and developed. And so how do we fund that? And that's something that we'll want to look closely at, is how we, how we fund those park improvements, because we know the community really desires and wants to have, you know, nice playgrounds, nice walking paths, you know, nice areas to be able to play ball and recreate. So that's, that's something that we'll be looking at, how we can fund that. Of course, there's, we also looked at the need to redo some of the existing storm drain facilities, and particularly in downtown. We have an aging storm drain system that runs right through the heart of our downtown. And parts of it actually go right underneath a number of buildings and/or vacant parcels. We are trying to pursue opportunities to relocate the storm drain within the public rights away, so that it will facilitate future development of some of those parcels that right now are impacted, because it's difficult to build on top of a storm drain in a manner that is safe. So that's another big project that we'd like to look at, that, you know, we think is vital for kind of the future of the city and the future redevelopment, and particularly of our downtown. The price tag to do all that work is about $4 million, and of course, it just goes up over time. We're pursuing, you know, grants through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, to help fund that project. So if we're successful, we'll put in place a program to help fund that storm drain. Ultimately, we want to make sure we improve storm drainage in downtown, so that there's no flooding, but also, again, provide opportunities for redevelopment, so that it really supports business activity and revitalization of our downtown. Last but not least, and one thing that I know, I hear quite often, and I know our city council does, is the need for repair of our local roads. The need really, frankly, is pretty overwhelming. I know Supervisor Gore can talk to the strategies that the counties employed to make road improvements, you know, across the county. Locally, we are challenged, because the revenue we receive from the state through gas taxes has been in decline for a number of years. And so we're looking at, you know, how do you backfill that funding? Luckily, the SB 1 was adopted, and I say luckily, because I see that it can provide a vital source of revenue to help the city fund some road improvement projects. The council did adopt a priority list of projects that they'd like to see undertaken with those SB 1 funds. I think, I'm glad to see that, just yesterday, Prop 69 passed. Prop 69 ensured that those SB 1 funds are dedicated to road improvement projects, as they were originally indicated in the legislation. And I think that's vital. We'd like to see those funds retained, because it does provide us a dedicated source of funding for needed, really needed road repairs and improvements. Finally, I think, one of the things I really want to touch on, I know there's been, as I mentioned, with the loss of redevelopment, it was a critical source of funding for affordable housing in Cloverdale. But we're working closely to redevelop the, one of our remaining affordable housing properties. We call it the Cherry Creek Site. It's a site that was formerly the Old Pharaoh Motel. We've been working with Colleen Holbrum on a concept plan to build additional transitional housing units on that project, to, you know, support some housing for veterans and families on that site. And some of the concepts there is something that I think you'll see coming forward and within the next year timeframe. With that said, I know I quickly laid out a number of challenges that the city council and city staff are working hard to meet, but I think, you know, we want to keep you posted. We are doing our best, and we want to make sure you're aware of these important issues. They're multifold in terms of their complexity. But we are really excited by the future in Cloverdale, and I think you'll see a lot of these, in the next two to three years, a lot of these projects come to fruition. So with that, I'll close. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Decker.
Hello, everybody. Feeling pretty special that you came to listen to us instead of watching that Warriors game, so thank you for that. So I don't know if I can really explain where we are today without explaining where we were as a school district in 2010. So in 2010, we had 1,525 students in our district. By 2015, we had 1,394. So we lost 131 students, which is roughly 26 students per year. And it's not because they were moving from Cloverdale. It's because they weren't coming to our school district, because we had to make so many cuts during that time. I'm happy to tell you, today, in 2018, we have 1,440 students. So increase of 46 students from 2015, and roughly 15 students per year. So our families are coming back, which is exciting for us, obviously. Also, in 2010, the district was in danger of being taken over by the state because of their financial situation. Today, we're one of the few districts who is actually adding positions, because our budget is in a good place. So we are hiring a number of positions this year. Teacher on special assignment to serve at Jefferson to help support kind of social, emotional well-being. We have, we're looking to potentially hire a groundskeeper for around our schools, so a number of different positions. And I'll also say, many of you may know, we passed a bond, Measure G, $17 million. And because of that, we've been able to do a number of things that we couldn't have done otherwise in our schools. So we upgraded a lot of the stuff you can't see, actually. It's inside of our classrooms. Everything's energy efficient now, our windows, our lighting, our HVAC. We have solar at Washington, right across the street, that we did with those funds. We have new bleachers at the high school for the football field. So that's just a few of the things, but it was amazing that the community supported the schools, because we were in a bad place at that time. And without you, we'd be in an even worse place. Class offerings. We had to cut so many things because of our budget. We had few electives, a few AP courses at the high school, and really, very little enrichment kindergarten through 6th grade. I'm happy to say today, that's a very different situation. So we have a number of AP. AP is Advanced Placement. So these are courses that... So we have a number of AP, AP is Advanced Placement, so these are courses that allow students to go to our Stanford's, our UC Berkeley's, and they're what they look for. So we currently offer Spanish, AP Spanish, art, biology, statistics, and environmental science. We actually have career technical education courses. These are hands-on courses where you can end by getting a certificate and potentially walk right into the workforce. And so we offer a class called Maker, which is building, it's being creative, it's got an art component, engineering. We also offer sustainable construction, which is a new course for us. Digital photography, business management, which is also a new course, so teaches our students how to run their own business, potentially. Culinary arts, as well as farm-to-table. So it kind of fits with Sonoma County to have a farm-to-table class for our kids. At Washington School, they offer a number of electives as well. So drama, band, health, engineering, taught by a former engineer, which is great for us. Art, we have public speaking, computer applications, intro to programming, yearbook, and Spanish, which is new from the past few years. And in fifth and sixth grade, so that's our middle school, seventh and eighth grade, in fifth and sixth grade, we actually brought back music. Johnny Conway, I see in the audience, so I know you love that, he's one of our teachers, brought back music to our elementary school students. That was something that got cut years ago, when our bad times. So we have music all the way down to third grade, and even our kindergarten through second graders get it occasionally, just not every week. With fifth and sixth grade, we also have a STEAM teacher. So STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, though we changed math to music. This person actually teaches our students how to do engineering, how to do coding, how to search on the internet effectively, it's a number of things. And so we have one for Jefferson, and we also have one for Washington. And it's, to be honest, we have one of the most robust programs for arts enrichment in the county, from what I'm told, and so I'm very proud of that, because we didn't have much at all, for our little guys especially, in the bad years. Technology, we had a computer lab at Washington, a computer lab at the high school in 2012, 2013. That was, we actually had two computer labs at the high school, one wasn't functioning so well. Today, I'm happy to report that for our kindergartners, actually have one iPad for every two students. Our first graders have one iPad for every student, that's starting next year. Second graders will have, second through 12th grade, every single student will have a Chromebook, okay? So everyone has access to that all day, every day. And our seventh through 12th graders actually get to take these things home. And for our students who can't afford it, we provide them with wireless access. Wages, we were one of the lowest-paying unified districts in Sonoma County for a number of years. And once again, we were in a bad place financially, I can't stress that enough. I'm happy to report today, we're actually the highest-paying unified district in Sonoma County. Unified, that's our district with high school, so Hillsburg, Windsor. And our classified, that's for teachers, and our classified staff, every single position that we have is in the top three of our comparable districts. We actually went through every single position, looked at our comparable districts, and made sure we were in the top three. So my CBO, sitting right here, my chief business official, Patty Mills, we worked hard on that, that was, two years ago, we did that. So happy to report that. So those are just a few things, obviously, that were important for me to share with you. So where we're headed, we're projecting some growth in Cloverdale, the city is. As I understand it, we're anticipating about 75 new people coming to Cloverdale each year, based on study done. And so, we don't have an empty classroom. And so in order to accommodate this growing population that is planned, we've had to kind of jump on looking at land. And we're actually in contract with some, on some land on the south side of Cloverdale, right behind where he was talking about the wine storage. We're in contract there, we don't know what we're going to do, but we have a number of different ideas that have been floated. We've talked about fields, we know we need fields in our town, I know Joe's talking about soccer fields, so we've discussed that, we've talked about baseball, softball fields, because we're impacted with Little League, as well as our own sports. We've talked about our district office really takes up a lot of the high school, and we've talked about trying to get us out of there, and pretty up the high school, pretty up the high school as well. And then we talked about a potential new school, depending on how many people come to Cloverdale, especially student-aged. We've looked at, or not looked at, we've discussed both elementary, potentially high school, we're not sure, it depends. A high school would be about $150 million. An elementary school would be more around the $40 to $50 million range. All of these things are extremely expensive. But the first thing we needed to do was make sure we had the land, because there's not a lot of available land in Cloverdale. We're also looking to upgrade our current facilities, so I didn't speak at all about our Makerspace, but I got to do it. So a Makerspace is really, our old auto shop and wood shop is now a Makerspace. And we've invested 1.7 million dollars into this space, and we just did this over the past two years. And the district actually invested 1.2 million dollars of our own funds, the other 500,000 came from Measure G, the end of Measure G paid for this. And what we've done is we renovated our auto shop and wood shop into a design lab and a build lab. The design lab has a green screen, it has a fully functional sound room with, I call, I talk to the kids, I call it the Dr. Dre Mix Table, because I have no clue what it's actually called. And we have movable furniture, so we can formate the room however we want. We have really high-powered computers in there, and so all the walls are whiteboard, so you can walk up right on the wall. It's our design place, it's where you go and you think about what you want to do. And then we have a build lab, and in this build lab, we have 3D printers, we have a number of 3D printers, we have shop bots. A shop bot is like a big router, you can, you can basically build a house from this shop bot. It's an amazing tool that routes up to five-foot by 10-foot pieces of plywood. We have laser cutters. We, I mean, from what I'm told by the County Office of Education, we have the premier space in the entire county, and this is, this just came about the past few years. It also has all the traditional wood shop tools you would see in a build space, and we have a roll-up door, we can actually roll in and out a potential tiny home. So our plan is to eventually build tiny homes out of this space and do a lot of cool stuff. So if you haven't been over to see it, you got to get over to see it. And so I say that, because while we've done that, we still have some other needs. I spoke about our culinary arts and our farm-to-table program. Their space is very, very outdated. And so one of the things that we need to look at is how to support that program moving forward. We also have some distinct needs for PE facilities at both Washington School, which is our middle school, and our high school. We can't actually really hold practice or games. In Washington's gym, it's not built for middle schoolers, it's built for little guys. So our high school gym is really impacted, and our kids sometimes don't get home until nine or 10 at night during basketball season, because it's just, there's so many teams that need the space. So we're really looking at that area over there. And we have a number of portables. So Jefferson, we have, I believe, what is it, 12 classrooms and 26 portable buildings? I mean, it's just rough to teach in those buildings, and they don't last very long. Washington's in better shape with regard to portables, but the high school has a number of portables as well. So we'd really like to, like to build our schools without these portables in place, and have it be brick and mortar, true structures. And like I said, we have no open classrooms. We've reduced our class sizes over the years, and so it's caused, I mean, it's much better for teaching and learning, obviously, but with our, and we've also expanded programs. When you expand programs, you take up classrooms. We don't have any, so I'm fearful and excited about the prospect of people building in Cloverdale, because we've got to house these kids, and I want those kids, but we've got to house them. So moving forward, we're really going to have to figure out how we can afford to have the spaces to house the students that are potentially coming. Something else that's exciting for us, I have my own time, am I doing okay? Yeah, all right. Something else that's exciting about us, exciting for us, is we have an integrated pathway coach, and that same person is also our work-based learning coordinator. And with the integrated pathway coach, her job is to take an English teacher and a social science teacher, and have them work together on a project, and then include the art teacher, and have them work together, and then also maybe you go to math, and this one big, one project can be hit by a bunch of different disciplines, and this person can help coordinate that. It's Kristy Calson does this. She's also our work-based learning coordinator, and she basically helps our kids find job shadowing opportunities in the community, and service learning opportunities, and that's her job. So to work with all of our Cloverdale companies, and we have many who are willing to take on our kids, and to coordinate those things for those kids. Finally, in the future, we're going to, of course, continue to refine our programs, so we have improved outcomes for our students. We actually offer the most professional development days in the county for our teachers, which is seven, we have seven days professional development. And we're trying really hard to focus those around what teachers' needs are, and a lot of what we hear is vertical articulation, they want to work with their colleagues to make sure that what we're teaching in seventh grade goes into eighth grade effectively, which then builds up to ninth grade, and those students are prepared for each step along the way. And of course, we're going to continue to develop our core programs and our electives. But those are just some of the things that I think are important to note, and really, I'm excited about what we're doing, guys, we're doing good things, and it's exciting, and we're in a different place than we were a long time ago. And on to Supervisor Core.
Good job. Good job. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Nobody tell me what's going on with the game tonight. It's on DVR. No spoilers. I just really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you guys. You know, as somebody, a lot of you know I grew up in Cloverdale until I was, you know, 10 or 11 years old, and it's fascinating to look at the Times Square area and remember when I was going after school, walking over from Washington and going bowling, you know what I mean, until my mom could pick me up, and it was a lot more mellow, it was, she didn't worry about us just running around town afterwards, and kind of, there wasn't a lot of trouble to find, we were having a good life. I actually love what's going on in Cloverdale these days. I look around, and having grown up in those days, it's awesome to see how you're developing. And I think one of the most inspiring things to me is that, since I started running for office and really got engaged and got my fingers into the dirt of where we're going as a community in all these areas, is the claim over and again about Cloverdale really wanting to have its own path. And I applaud Experienced Cloverdale, that movement and what you're doing. I look at Debbie with what's going on with the Health Center, and I know it's a, we're rocking and rolling. Jason, you know, what we've done on fire and what we're doing in consolidation, I'll get some of this going, and building a more robust system of not just response, but preparedness, so that we're approaching a world which we define as the new normal in a much better way. Love, you know, excitement about the fair, and Katie, what we did in Sonoma County Fair. I look across the place, and I just see vibrancy. So I want to kind of, you know, shake it loose a little bit, because we can get a little boring sometimes when we, you know, talk about details, and talk about the fact that we have to review this contract that has, you know, paragraph four, subpart B, subsection A, it says this complexity needs to be dealt with with more complexity, and you need to use your local tax dollars to be able to exonerate and free your tax dollars from the state level, to bring them back, to fix a pedestrian bridge on First Street and do this. It gets very crazy, because as much as we'd like to say, keep it simple stupid, you need to figure out how to dive into complexity and get results. Okay? So I want to first of all, give an applause out to this guy right over here, who's the mayor and the rest of the city council. Please, give him a little shout. Okay, I want to let you know, this guy, Joe Paula, he gets, he gets a little irked if I don't keep my regular meetings with him. And I mean that in the best way possible. He puts a list together, he sits down with me, he says, James, the goals for this year, you know, you just got elected, pedestrian bridge on, over on First Street Bridge, Boys and Girls Club, we're really concerned about losing the Boys and Girls Club, Clover Springs Trails, right? Making sure the trails get built out. You do not get results with this kind of stuff if you do not stay on something. That is the only way something gets done. Despite our budgets, despite everything, it's tenacity, because we are all too damn busy to do damn good work if we don't let ourselves have focus. So it's an absolute honor, I would say, in this regard, because, you know, the pedestrian bridge that will go on, it'll take two more years till construction starts, that's a huge win for the community. We worked our tails off together, and with Carol Russell on the SCTA committee, but you and I just skunk-working it and trying to figure it out. The city didn't have the money to put in the application, we found the money to do it ourselves. We had staff go, drive, we lobbied like crazy fools with three different cycles, took us two years, and we got it. And when you get it, you're like, sweet, this is a great one, and then, and then folks say, what about the Asti Bridge? And I mean that, because that's the kind of work and the kind of world we live in, right? Which is, you do not get a chance to gloat and, you know, fly confetti all around, it's like, what's next? And there is a positive statement to the, to the what have you done for me lately? I have never gotten so much flack as putting a million and a half dollars from the roads' budget into River Road, and then it getting delayed for a year because of the historic rains. You know what I mean? I don't mean that in a bad way. It's because people are dying to see progress. They're dying to see it. When you see roads crumbling, when you see services falling, when you see teachers leaving your community, it erodes the confidence you have in the future. And we're on a good trend, we're on a good uptick here in Cloverdale, and throughout Sonoma County, and what we got to focus on is what's the resilience to keep that going, despite what happens with the macro elements of economy. So I'm going to turn on the fire hose for a minute and throw a couple things out here. I've got 15 minutes, I'm going to hold it, I'm timing myself, it's going to beep, I might change it during though. So first thing is, is that you've talked about annexations, there really is a discussion about what's the future footprint of Cloverdale. A lot of county land surrounding it, as some of you might know, a lot of the tax lands that are industrial or other things are in the county. That doesn't help your world when you have either a gas station, or you have another commercial entity, which really is more impactful to the city than to the county, right? It's more of a city service, but when it's on our tax rolls. So one of the things we've worked a lot on is these incremental annexations that we need to deal with. We need to do Renner here, now we need to go and do this one. But at the same time, we have the Sonoma County General Plan coming up, it'll be initiating next year. That's a process by which, what I want to do in my discussions with David and Joe and the rest of the council, is how do I put county funding behind what is the future footprint, so we don't just spend our time and our money doing this and then doing it again, but we get kind of a good landscape of where are the appropriate areas. This does not mean we're going to be able to have annexed the entirety all the way to Asti. What it means is, I don't need those tax dollars as the county, you need them. On that same note, I was pretty strongly opposed to, I'm not here to talk about cannabis, but I will touch on it for a minute. On a different issue, because, you know, it's tough when something clouds so much of all the other work that's going on in a community, and it begins to take an uproar, and it, and it, it makes you seem like craziness is going on, but one of the things that you all are going through is just like the rest of the community, is the growing pains of coming out of an illegal prohibition and coming into the real world, right? And there's a lot of angst about how you do that appropriately, but as just one discreet thing, is we were petitioned in the county to allow a dispensary over at the saw shop next to Redwood Empire, the lumber mill down there. So I was very opposed to that. The reason being is, is that I'm not going to permit something that has the most impact on the city and permit it just on the edge in the county. So those are the kind of examples of how we need to work together and make sure that we support each other in different ways. One thing that everyone needs to keep on their, on their chartered path is not just the development, as you talk about, over next to the airport, that's been a long time of discussing where it might go, where it doesn't, but I would encourage, and we should follow up on this, is for us to hold a combined meeting with the Cloverdale Pomo Tribe. They do have a right, if you didn't, if you didn't check in, it was given to them about a year and a half ago, they can put a casino in by law, right? They have the rights to be able to do a development and all these other things. I have found them to be extremely reasonable and patient about the way they approach things. I have not found them to be like some of our other tribes that are rushing towards something. I don't think you can anticipate a casino getting here anytime soon. Why? Because there ain't, there's competition, there's other casinos. So, you know, I think it's a huge opportunity to try and build some relationship, and they're probably trying to figure out what's going on with their land, and we need to follow up and just talk about that, and say, what are the other things that are going on in the developments adjacent and that, and I can help with that. Roads, I have to just say, you know, you got to prioritize, and somebody said recently, or a long time ago, I don't know which, show me your pocketbook and your calendar, and I'll show you my, I'll show, I'll show you your priorities, right? And it's very true, so I've mentioned this before, but, you know, we made a strong commitment from our District Four roads budget, gave about 70% of that to North County areas, so that was the first So that was the first time you're going to see paving or you've seen paving up here in darn near 30 years out of the county. So what does that mean? That means Crocker, AKA First Street, heading into the county got paved. It means there's work started and going to keep going on Hot Springs, going up over the hill towards Lake Sonoma, which was also a request from the city council that helped me find a way to use two different kind of pots of money to take care of the same thing, which is a good thing. So we got it. River Road's going to be next. It's a big project. You know, there's always discussion on the infrastructure side about Asti Bridge. I'm working with a group of neighbors there. We're doing an assessment of really what would the engineering costs and other things be? How do we work on this? And we're going after some FEMA money, which Federal Emergency Management Agency is saying that it's a fire hazard. You've been very good with Clover about supporting that, and there's a big danger over there. So there's a bunch of stuff going on. At the same time, there's a slump still over on the Geysers Road heading out of town. If you think where the old Preston Bridge used to be on the east side of town, that's a nasty one, and we're getting a reimbursement from the Federal Highway Administration to be able to fund that. That's hoping, I'm hoping we can get it in later this year. Dealing with all kinds of issues, even so much as, like my favorite stuff, is dealing with poop. You know, I mean, all of a sudden I get a call like last year that down off of Preston, there is so, there's been so many parties down by the river. There's been so much partying and other things going on that you go down there and it's a hazmat site. People are holding raves down there. And I mean, it's disgusting, right? I mean, you know, it's so disgusting that it's so, you know, I deal with a lot of septic laws and sewer laws. We always find nice euphemisms, you know? It's called, it's not a septic system, it's actually an onsite wastewater treatment system, in case you didn't know. Because we don't want to refer to it as what it is. But anyways, we got to deal with that stuff. And so we actually cleaned, did a cleanup, hazmat cleanup, and we blocked parking down there, which sucks for some people, but it's not managed, right? And I don't have the budget to be able to put it in. So then you piss off other people who say, now you cut off access to the river, we can't park down there. Unfortunately, a lot of my decisions come down to what's called the old utilitarian model. The greatest good for the greatest amount of people, or what's right, you know? So the only time that I don't go with what I think is the full flat-out majority is when I feel like it's about what's right. And if people disagree with me, they can not vote for me next time. But you know, that's kind of the part. Do you vote, do you vote the uproar and the emotion, or do you vote like try and get all sides and figure out where you're going? We've put a lot of transient occupancy tax that I put from our district in here. Glad to support and will continue to support Experience Cloverdale. We've got a nice sum of money coming to the fairgrounds. Keep those kinds of applications coming to me. I do have some discretionary dollars that can go in. And you know, 5,000 here or 2,000 there can make a big difference for that kind of gap funding so you don't have to go out and raise it by people who are already exhausted. That was not my beeper. I'm not done. So, you know, the biggest thing that's a calling for me right now, as I do have to address this, is what was taught to us by these wildfires this past year. It knocked us off of a pedestal of a little bit of complacency in certain areas, right? And it showed us what the current reality we live in, what it's all about. And some people, including Governor Brown, talk about the new normal, right? So you're talking about on October 8th, that night, up on Geysers Peak, 90 to 100 mile an hour gusts, referred to as a Diablo Wind, Santa Ana Winds as they're referred to down south, going south, heading southwest, pushing out towards that area. I mean, you know this better than anybody. 120 spark fires consolidate into 20 mega fires throughout this region, convert into three mega fires in Sonoma County. And as much as we were destroyed, it's crazy to even say this, but we're also lucky. I mean, it gives me the chills. It's like in a bad, I don't know what way. I mean, Palomino Lakes Vineyard Club was able to fight it off. Chalk Hill Road had a couple of big blazes that got stifled on the first moments there. All those areas are just ripe to be taken again. And at the same time, let's not talk about wildfires, let's talk about that the U.S. Geological Survey estimates that in between now and 2032, we have a 62% chance of a 6.5 earthquake or above by 2032. So two-thirds chance of a nice, good, medium rocker. And by 2040, that goes up to about 80%. So every day, we're closer to a quake, right? Are you prepared? Are you ready? Is this Armageddon and doomsday? No. It's about preparedness. It's about knowing your neighbors. It's about having plans. It's about knowing that if a red flag warning gets signified by the state or through the National Weather Service, that means that you have to treat that as our equivalent of a hurricane warning, right? It's about having a go-bag. It's about having smart, you know, preparing your family, being, getting confident, not unconfident about the future. So that's my passion. This is a calling. This is not a job anymore. So you're going to continue to see that our budget season, which starts next week, is going to be really focused on emergency services. It's going to be supporting regionalization, if I have anything to do with it, for fire districts so that you can team up and figure out ways to own your own footprint in your areas, get you the tax dollars, get them out of the county, decentralize that. It's going to be about a whole litany of outreach to try and figure out where we are. And then it's also about organizing community members under things like COPE and CERT. Communities organizing to prepare for emergencies or citizen emergency response teams. You know, these different things that we have actually really good initiatives flowing in places like Fitch Mountain, Vineyard Club, other places. Get people ready for where we're at. Get confident. Couple of things I want to hit real quickly is on the transportation side. Two things. One is RM3 passed yesterday, Regional Measure 3. Tolls are going up, right? So I think tolls should go up. If the cost of repairing infrastructure goes up, why shouldn't tolls go up? I don't like to spend more money, but that's inflation. That's the reality we work with. That's what's tough about the tax or not tax discussion. But you're talking about three big projects for Sonoma County with that. So number one is Highway 37, about 100, 200 million dollars to help raise Highway 37, deal with that. Number two is the Nevada Narrows. How horrible is that? That's going to be the money to be able to finally finish that on both the Marin and Sonoma side. Number three, Smart Train to Windsor inching north. That's good. That's good. That's not bad. I know everybody's frustrated. I know you're paying taxes just like me for many years for a train that hasn't showed up, but we got to stay loud. Now's the time to get real active, too. You know, nothing like Carol Russell saying, no taxation without transportation. I think she said she's watching. But I called her yesterday, left her message, said, it's time for us to rally because now that it's got funded to Windsor, if we get money, which we need to go after federal, state, matching, local to get that Hillsburg Freight Bridge fixed, we're getting somewhere, right? Okay? So don't, you know, it's once again, I'm not going to give any promises, politician. Hey, I'll promise in three years. No, it's like we need to get loud. We need to remind folks that North County's still waiting in a positive way, right? So the other thing is this SB1 that you mentioned, Senate Bill 1. If any of you vote in November for the repeal of SB1, I just am going to cry. Because, once again, gas tax, sure, I don't want to, I don't want to pay it. There's no other options for our roads. This has been 10 to 20 years in the making to do this, right? There's fees for electrical cars, about 100 bucks a pop. There's gas tax, there's diesel. Even the California State Association of Counties that has, is totally outweighed by more conservative districts because of the rural nature of them, by and large, 95% vote for it because they're like, we just can, we don't have anything else. Our roads will continue to crumble, and some of you will be excited because we've put historic money into roads in the county. But the reality is, is it'll be a sinkhole. It's not sustainable. So please pay attention to the details, not the stupid dogma that gets promoted in political campaigns, right? So I want to thank you all. I love what I do. I got four more years. How did that happen? I mean, holy moly. But I say this honestly, as somebody's like, oh yeah, that's great, you scared them all away, you're doing a really good job. And I'm like, hey, remember that this fire sucked all the oxygen out of this community. Can you imagine somebody running against like a supervisor and saying, hey, he's a jerk? Like, I can do better than him. And you're sitting here like grinding with fire survivors, trying to do anything you can, and you're embracing a philosophy of the only thing perfect is imperfect relentless progress. You know, we have block captains that we meet with weekly, 18 people who represent about 2,000 homes that burnt down, and we just go through hell and back with them every day. Last week, it's debris removal. This week, it's insurance. Next month, it's gap funding. I mean, just people are grinding. And they're saying two messages. Don't forget us, right? Don't forget. It's not done. And the second thing they're saying is, never forget. Never forget our experience. Do not go back to your lives and think, oh, I'm in Cloverdale, and just because I'm in the city limits, I'm not going to have a fire come in and take 500 homes in Cloverdale or in Windsor. So with that being said, love being here with you guys. Thank you for the opportunity. Nina.
Tough act to follow. Alrighty then. Thank you for listening. Where are we today? I'm talking on behalf of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Executive Director. Who is your chamber? We are Board President and Realtor Ron Pavelka. Me, I already said me. Janice Brewer, previously from the media world of Southern California. Amy Schaefer is a cosmetic consultant. Shop owner Kelly Voss. Romero Rodriguez, who's the branch manager of Cloverdale's Exchange Bank. Peter Rossin, building owner and developer. Kathleen Kelly Young from Kelly &amp; Young Wine Garden Inn and the tasting room at the library. Great, fabulous, hardworking board. We also have invited two students, juniors at Cloverdale High School, to be the conduit between the chamber and the high school. They are Eden Winifred and Julie Edwards. In our office, we have CHS grad Savannah Hemphill helping out, doing, actually, she's the glue that holds the place together. And also CHS grad Blake Seavy, who keeps the office open on the weekends. So, kind of just to bring you up to date, past 12 months, and I know I'm going to run out of time, and I'm happy to stop when I do, and we can talk about this, come and meet me in the office. The last 12 months, we launched a beautiful website, enabling access from a computer, a tablet, a mobile phone. It highlights our community and encourages visitors to eat, stop, stay and play here. We launched the Experience Cloverdale campaign, branding campaign, with flags, t-shirts, banners and signs. We enabled businesses, the arts and service organizations to use those graphics, to make them their own by making sure that we had an available brand book which specifies the color, the fonts, the, everything that they need to make that happen and have it be a consistent message. I often say, the most important part of the Experience Cloverdale idea is the tagline, you can experience a low-grade fever. You can experience a lot of things. It's the tagline under Experience Cloverdale, which is uniquely us. Things like, Will at Ace Hardware is the nicest guy in town. Where you can dance under the stars at Friday Night Live. Where Pix has served hamburgers since 1923. An Experience Cloverdale Instagram page has been set up, and we have established a loyal and growing following. Please follow us if you don't already, and like us on Facebook. To our social media reach is expanding month over month. Our interest is in promoting Cloverdale as a destination. We have done that in the past recent history by volunteering at the KRCB Wine Auction. We participate in the Sonoma County Visitors Guide, 101 Things to Do in Sonoma County. We were at the launch of the Smart Train. We are on the Sonoma County Tourism websites and on Sonoma West newspaper's websites. We produced the 2017 Car and Motorcycle Show downtown. Over 220 motorcycle, excuse me, vehicles were entered. And we just rebuilt that website so we make it easy for people that want to register and pay online. High-tech and high-touch. We're also happy to help them fill out the applications and take checks face-to-face. We developed and printed a new Cloverdale map. It's been delivered to businesses, inns and hotels throughout the city and beyond, the airport, Hillsburg Visitor Center and some concierge destinations in San Francisco. We'd love to have you come in and get one for the map pouch of your car if you don't already have one. Our downtown sign committee has inventoried the directional signs downtown, many woefully out of date. We've reached out to businesses and we're going to be replacing, restoring, removing, and making them at least point in the right direction. Okay. We do this in concert with the Public Works Department. They're the ones that actually do the hanging. That project should be finished shortly. We're at the tail end of it. We continue to maintain the Highway 101 billboard that you drive past at 70-plus miles an hour. It's just north of Dutcher Creek. It was vandalized over the Thanksgiving weekend, but fixed with volunteer help that next Monday. The Cloverdale, we also have established a chamber advisory board with the help of four business leaders who help us validate what we're doing and keep us on track. We developed, this is really redundant, kind of, I mean, there'll be a test. Okay. We developed a dining and drinking guide featuring every dining and libation establishment in Cloverdale. I say often McDonald's to Trading Post. It includes the Dante. It's available at the chamber's visitor's office and in the local hotels and inns and destinations. With our landlord, we've helped to refurbish the chamber's downtown office so it better reflects how we want to serve our businesses, our community and our residences. We invite you to stop by and tell us how we did. In fact, we're going to have an open house on the 21st of June. More about that. We've developed a welcome bag, which is being hand-delivered to new Cloverdale residents. Included is a letter from Mayor Paula welcoming new residents, chamber collateral, a newspaper revelry, subscription offer and other kinds of things. We're going to expand that so that businesses have an opportunity to have promotional material for new residents. We've resurrected the community garden on South Cloverdale Boulevard by allowing volunteers and the garden committee to operate under our chamber nonprofit umbrella with liability insurance. The Green Thumb Garden Club has pitched in to help, and we have a group of people, including Coordinator Holly Nelson, to help us make that a reality. It will be beautiful, and it's a work in progress as we speak. Later this month, county certified tourism ambassadors are going to be coming to Cloverdale in conjunction with Friday Night Live on June 22nd. These are people from the hospitality industry and people who work in Sonoma County's visitor's centers, most of whom have never been to Cloverdale. They'll be welcomed, have guided tours and participate in a taste of Cloverdale. Our local restaurants, winemakers, brewers and olive oil purveyors will share their offerings with them in the History Center Garden and in the shaded patio area behind Bolt. It should be a lovely evening. I checked my, I checked my weather to make sure it's not going to be triple digits. They'll have a chance to then partake in the street fair and Friday Night Live. So I hope I've almost gone over my time, but that's just where we are today. We're going to just take a real brief kind of look at where we're headed. It's, our future's so bright, we really do have to wear shades. We're working feverishly on the 25th Annual Car and Motorcycle Show and the Friday Night Cruise with the help of our Roadrunners Car Club and many volunteers. We have selected a band. We've dubbed the Friday Night Deal More Rockin' Nights rather than the Arts Alliance's Moroccan Nights. We got their permission. Anyway, rack cards are going to be available at the end of the week, and car show friends are circulating those amongst their other car shows that they visit. We launched year, I'm getting tired. We launched year two of Experience Cloverdale with Heather Gray t-shirts and ball caps. Window posters grace many windows saying, Experience Cloverdale, where our businesses are the heart of the community. We're still in the process of getting them all out there. Experience Cloverdale coasters were given to bars and restaurants where you can sip, taste and toast. We're working to develop a Hispanic involvement advisory committee comprised of local bilingual businesspeople who can help us extend the chamber's reach into our Hispanic community. The Bi-National Health and Cultural Committee also uses our chamber nonprofit umbrella for their annual Bi-National Health Fair. I really am almost done. A Things to Do Guide is also being developed, which will encourage visitors once in Cloverdale to experience like Sonoma, the Arts Alliance Gallery, wine tasting, breweries, our parks... to experience like Sonoma, the Arts Alliance Gallery, wine tasting, breweries, our parks and everything in between. It will be available when folks check in at the Rotary's Asti Tour Divine, the Kiwanis Marathon in the vineyards and for the Alexander Film Festival, all in October. Then it's Dia de los Muertos Sugar Skull Decorating for the young and the young at heart. We'll have business decorations and then we're talking winter festival and holiday tree lighting. Boy, we just went wicked fast through that, didn't we? We plan to expand it quite a bit this year, so stay tuned. Down the road a bit time-wise, we'd like to set up Wi-Fi and outdoor seating for visitors and locals who love to be downtown. That could grow to the whole downtown area, who knows? An electronic kiosk with visitor information, who knows? How about two centrally located event flyer kiosks to free up the windows in our downtown? We're also going to feed our website steroids so that the website calendar is available for any and all organizations in Cloverdale so we don't have multiple events, multiple big events on the same day at the same time. So, we're going to work on a campaign to get people to use it. It's there, it's beautiful, it's easy. So, I think you have to be tired of hearing my voice, but just one other little thing. We're going to be more a part of the San Francisco Chronicle judging competition as well as the Fort Mason event for the public tasting next year. It's a perfect place to showcase Cloverdale and we're all about that. So, I think I'm done. Am I done? Yeah. Okay. Debbie?
Thanks Nina. Thank you Joe for inviting me here, Mayor Paula. So, I'm in the healthcare field. I'm the CEO of Alexander Valley Healthcare here in town. And as a person in that field, I would like to say, everyone stand up for just a minute because this is a very long time to listen to long-winded people.
Are you talking about me?
Yeah, me too. I can sometimes see, go ahead and have a seat. Doesn't it feel good? I cannot stand when I'm in meetings and we sit, 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 sit. Oftentimes at staff meetings, I'll start looking around and when they start yawning, you know, you gotta move, you gotta move. So, anyway, if you're not familiar with Alexander Valley Healthcare, we are a community health center. We are federally qualified health center, which means that we have applied for a designation through the federal government, which allows us to provide care for uninsured and underinsured people at no or very minimal cost to them. And we get funded for that through this grant program. It's a blessing in disguise. But the big, real thing is that we are a community health center. And that's really important to me because this is my community. How many people live here that's in the audience? So, how many people know how wonderful Cloverdale is? I do. So, I've lived here for over 30 years, raised my kids here and have worked in this health center for the last 17 years. And where we've been and where we're going is amazing. When I started working there, we were ready to close our doors. I think Ray Holly might have wrote a story about it. I can't remember if it was him. I think we were closing in 90 days or something like that and it was ugly. What happened is we just, we were operated and governed by a board of directors, of which 51% of them must be patients of the health center. That's a federal requirement, which is an awesome thing. People may not understand what that means, but that means they're invested in the services that we provide. And that board took over the management of the health center. At that time, we were a rural health clinic and started steering the boat in a different way. They, for some reason, voted me as the executive director and then later promoted me to the CEO, which is really the same exact job, okay? So, let's make no mistake about that. And we've been going gangbusters ever since. We've grown into a $6 million operation from a $1 million operation in 2013, I believe. We serve 5,500 patients a year. That's over half of the population of Cloverdale. Our patients are all varieties of people, ethnic backgrounds, age, education attainment. We serve insured patients, privately, commercially insured. We serve uninsured patients, Medi-Cal patients, Medicare patients, everyone. Everyone who comes to our door is served. If you're a Kaiser patient and you come in, and we have many of these, and also, just let me say, the skate park that's been talked about, we're going to have some X-ray services in our new facility. So, if you're a Kaiser patient and you get a cut, you know, you don't have time to drive to Kaiser. They come to our health center and we serve them. That's what we're here for, to serve the community. We have 53 staff members. When I started, there was, I think, 13 or 14. We crossed that horrible threshold of over 50, so now we have all kinds of regulations we have to follow. And I won't even bore you with them because it just is mind-boggling. But we have a great staff. We have six primary care, family-certified physicians and two nurse practitioners. We have two psychologists. We have one licensed clinical social worker and we have two dentists and a hygienist. That's our primary care providers that provide services to all of our patients and they do an excellent job. In 2017, they served, we served over 30,000 individual visits and services to our patients and to community members. We do our school screenings. We do physicals, employee physicals for the city, for Cloverdale Healthcare Center, Royzer, a couple of different places. We do DMV physicals. We provide all the sports physicals or anyone who needs a sports physical can come to our facility and get that sports physical at a very reasonable cost. And if they can't pay for it, they get it anyway. This is about the kids, our kids. We do a lot of things there. We have certified enrollment counselors that will help you sign up for Cover California, Medi-Cal, CalFresh, and that's all available to the entire community. Where are we going? Well, if you didn't notice, down below, I have on the ESOS the site plan for the Times Square property, which I'm getting disoriented. We're right across the street, right? Okay. I have navigation in my new car. This is how I am with directions. I said to my kids, who are all grown and live on their own, and they come by to see their pathetic mom every now and then and say, oh, how are you doing? I said, hey, every time I get my car, it tells me how many minutes till I get home. What does that mean? And how does it know that? My kids go, and you wonder why we worry about you. So, so I get disoriented very easily. I'm glad I have that navigation system now. We're right across the street is the Times Square that we reference as the Times Square property. And we've been working with the city for a very long time. To be honest, I think it was about 2009, our former board chairman, Mark there, are you, can I, hi, Mark, said, Debbie, I think the perfect location for a new facility is at Times Square. And, and you know, me, I'm like, well, Mark, I don't know, you know, this is, that's probably a pipe dream. Well, here we are, 2018, in discussions every other week with the city, meeting an ad hoc on purchasing a parcel of that, that five acres owned by the city to build a new healthcare facility. We are currently in two locations and in those locations, and one is for dental and admin and one is for primary care, behavioral health and outreach services, is about 7,000 square feet. And we fit 53 individuals into this space and 5,500 patients. We're on top of each other. It's just amazing that we could do what we do. A lot of coordinating, a lot of breathe, 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 breathe. You know, if you walk down the aisles, you'll see. And if you've never been there, you've got to come by. It's a great little facility. We're all electronic health records, so we don't have a room full of files anymore. That took up quite a bit of space. But it's still very, very crowded. So, we started on this mission of building a new facility, 2009, nine years ago. It feels like nine years ago. And what we're doing is we're building a facility that is designed for the community. So, we have established that our primary care, comprehensive primary care is the platform of this new facility, but the overall design and intention is to provide a wellness center that is available to everyone. So, the whole first floor of this facility is dedicated to bringing services to Cloverdale, bring specialists up here. Maybe we only need an orthopedic, eight hours a month to serve the whole community, regardless if you're our patients or not. If you're, if your primary care in Healsburg says you need to see the orthopedist and we've got one coming up here, you can go there, right? Physical therapy, laboratory, X-ray services, which I did not intend to do until I learned about the skate park. I can't have the skate park right across from us and we can't help people if they think they broke something. That would be awful to me. It's all about what the community needs and we have to adjust what we do according to what's going on in the community. Laboratory, I said that. Teen Clinic. We are going to have urgent care. We do provide urgent care now, but it's not like open, open, open and publicized. If you're our patient, you can get in the same day for care, any urgent care that you need. If you're not our patient, we'll ask a few questions and we'll still get you in. I mean, we still will, but it might be a little bit of a wait. So, we're, we're looking at developing an urgent care. That was actually a recommendation when we did our facility needs assessment. We're, we're growing. This community's growing. This is a great community. And in our organization, we are strong, compassionate, believing people that think that healthcare is your right. It is not a privilege. And it doesn't matter where you come from, what you've, what you've done or haven't done, what your insurance is or your insurance isn't, none of that matters. What matters is that we all take care of each other and we do that there. And we will continue to do that and build it. It's about health and wellbeing. And that's the whole philosophy behind the wellness center, is develop a center with centralized services for everyone to access when they need it. And to change and add to it as we need to, as we grow. Like Jeremy saying about the school, what they've done to accommodate this norm now. The norm is changing. Lastly, I don't want to bore everyone. I could go on and on and on with data, statistics, you name it, I could talk about it when it comes to this, this line of, of business. But it's boring to most people and I have to question my sanity when it's not boring to me, but, oh, well, that's who I am and that's okay. I love what I do. I love that we help people. And I love that we have the most wonderful staff that is all compassionate. We often laugh that we're kind of like, if you're old enough to remember the Cheers program sitcom where everybody knows your name, there is, this is, this is our community. And this is, when you go to, go to our health center, everybody knows your name and they know who you are and they say, hi, I'm welcome you and are glad to see you. I don't get that when I go to Kaiser. They don't even know me. And I, I miss that. I miss that. So, I'm no longer a Kaiser patient as of June 1st. I'm so excited. But you know, we live in this world, this, this world now where insurance is, it's hard. It's really hard. And you have to take what your employer offers you or you have to get your own and pay high deductibles and copays, whatever. That's, that's all political stuff I don't want to get into. I'm known to do that too. So, anyway, if you have any questions or you want to take a tour or you just want to see what we're about, always feel free to contact me. People do have my direct line, email. I'm on the website. Any emails that come into our health center come to me, not because I'm important, just because I want to make sure they're answered. That's all. I don't want it to go into that black hole where nothing gets taken care of. So, thank you again, Mayor Paula, for having me and thank everyone else. These people are wonderful to work with. And Jason.
Well, thank you very much. I echo all the sentiment here. Where have we been? We were in the old police department. And so, I wish you really well. It's, it's time and well-deserved for a new police station. The fire department's been around since 1886, a long, long, long tradition of providing great services to the community of Cloverdale. As far as, I need to give you a little bit of overview real quick before I kind of go where we're at and where we're going. The department is a combination department. We have two administrators, a fire chief and administrative assistant, six full-time personnel, and that's supported by a combination of up to 30 firefighters, volunteers. For us, being able to throw a strong operational force out there to protect the community is really, really critical. So, most of our efforts and what we do is all geared toward our ability to protect the community, to deliver emergency medical services, to be able to get to your emergency or your need, you know, very, very rapidly. Hopefully, most of my firefighters do not know your names. So, but, but, but if they do, they'll deliver you a great level of service and if not, call me anytime and I'll make sure that never happens again. But they do great, great work. And we staff the department very, very strategically and we do everything to just keep the machine running with limited power and limited funding. We do the traditional volunteer that we kind of envisionize over the years is really, really a diminishing rare breed. Life has gotten so complex, so busy, the demands in the fire service is rapidly increasing with training demands, call volume, and so that makes it really challenging. But we do everything really that we can to be very creative with our volunteers. We have stipend programs. We offer internships. We use added district volunteers. We do a wide variety and combination of programs to make sure that we're delivering a good service. Some of the things we're really focused on in the future is being able to create additional revenue to grow the organization. We need to expand programs, make sure our volunteer workforce remains strong, but expand programs as far, like as prevention, emergency preparedness, programs like that that are really important. It's hard for a department of our size to be able to do everything the best that we absolutely can, that we envision. So, most of what we do is really put forth that operational strength like I talked about. And one of the examples of the night of October 8th, what most people are unaware of is about 11 o'clock that night, we had a fire breakout on the north end of town by, at the Redwood Empire Mill. And when we were toned out for that call, I was at the very top of Hot Springs looking south, trying to get a gauge on the complexity of the situation. It looked like Healsburg was absolutely, totally on fire. Alls I saw was orange looking south. And at night, a glow can be very deceiving. It could be really a mile away or it could be 25 miles away. It's really, really hard to tell. But right as I was at the top of that, we got that fire tone out and we got there, we had a couple of Cloverell engines already making an interior attack and I'm losing my mind backing them out of that building, which that's not what we do. We normally go into the building and put the fire out. But what we had that night was those strong winds that we know was dropping embers on the pavement and just shooting it south across that pavement as fast as you can imagine. And it's like, if this catches that hillside on fire, we're going to be in deep, deep trouble for this community. So, like, after they kind of understood the order and what we were talking about and wetting down the pavement and ember control is the first priority and then we'll deal with the interior stuff, you know, they understood. But once we got that knocked down, we rendered aid south. And we sent four engines for immediate life threat for people trapped in homes in the Santa Rosa and Rankin Valley area. And as two additional Cloverell engines were heading south, they noticed a pocket fire. And so, two diverted there. And so, I'll tell you, Cloverdale Fire Department stepped up big, big time during that month. We had over 20 firefighters and three chief officers and four fire engines assigned to those fires for 30 days straight. I'll, I'll tell you that I think that's unmatched for any agency in this county to do what we did based upon our size. So, your people did a great job. Some of the areas where we're going, we've been real fortunate in, let's start off with the unfortunate. I became the fire chief in late 2010 and it was like, oh, congratulations, by the way, there's a massive budget crisis and you're going to lay off three firefighters. I changed my mind. But we were able to, to work with the county. Supervisor McGuire and Supervisor Gore were tremendous in a couple of years, helping us with some funding to help bridge that gap to where we kept our firefighters on duty to protect Cloverdale and beyond. So, that was huge. We finally climbed our way out of that, but it did take a We finally climbed our way out of that, but it did take a couple of years and today we're sitting in a good position compared to where we were. But as far as the future needs and where we need to go as an organization, we need to always maintain a very strong operational workforce with paid staff, with volunteers, with auxiliary support personnel and a real, real strong depth of membership that can be very, very flexible and dynamic. We already today have firefighters from Sonoma County that are in San Benito County fighting fire. So it's already starting early and so that puts us towards the preparation and preparedness, sending that message. We have a strong weed abatement program within the city limits and outside the city limits, we partner with Cal Fire enforcing weed abatement and programs to make sure properties are safe as can possibly be. One of the other things we really need to do is the community outreach component, is try to control and be more active in the Facebook message. We learned from the Tubbs Fire that if you don't create the message, someone else will and that can become very, very problematic when most of the time that information is wrong or incorrect. And so communities throughout Sonoma County are trying to come up with better ways to help deal with the demand for people needing information immediately. The struggle that we have on the fire service is that our planning cycle, how we work in a day, is that we are operational, do our fire line tactics, we report that information back at 2:00, we have a planning meeting at 4:00 and we develop the plan with our resources and there's this cycle, the planning cycle. Well, that's how we're so used to operating is this planning cycle and so when the public demands information at 11:00 AM in the morning and it's like, as a fire chief, it's like, I don't even know what's going on yet. So it makes it really challenging and it's not just our community, every community with technology and the way it goes, trying to infuse and get information out rapidly. One of the things that supervisor Gore did during those fires was, you saw, I'm sure some of you saw his Facebook Live videos, that was extremely helpful. When that started going off, I was like, oh my gosh, you helped me tremendously, you have no idea. The phone was ringing off the hook and then people were able to get information. So James, thank you. Another thing that's really important is just the outreach. If you have questions, we need to outreach on a big scale, but we also are an organization that we outreach anywhere, anytime, one-on-one. You call Cloverdale Fire Department, we will solve your problem, that's our motto. We are there to help and figure it out and do the best that we absolutely can with our limited resources. So that's kind of our main mission is to make sure that we solve the problem every day and we get the wide variety of like supervisor Gore is saying, we partner with all the agencies that are up here and a lot, a lot of issues pop up and working in a collaborative effort. Some days I feel like I'm not the fire chief, I feel like I'm supporting the police department or planning or public works and I'm sure they feel the same exact way and vice versa, but we always keep our head held high, we work together and we solve problems. So I think that's great that how this community comes together for that. With that, I think I'll wrap it up and if you have any questions ever, don't hesitate, give me a call, thank you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, on behalf of the Cloverdale Citrus Fair Board and Staff, I'd like to welcome you to our facility. The Cloverdale Citrus Fairgrounds is owned and operated and governed by the Cloverdale Citrus Fair Association, which is a nonprofit corporation. This is the home of the annual Cloverdale Citrus Fair, a vital part of the network of 76 California fairs whose influence is widespread. Citrus Fair celebrated its 126th year this past February. It's not only one of the oldest fairs in California, it's also the earliest in the season. Putting on a fair, as you can imagine, is a tremendous community effort made possible by our very generous sponsors, volunteers, vendors, entertainers, just to name a few. This year, we welcomed over 17,000 attendees through our gates and proudly celebrated the superheroes in our community with the theme, "It's a bird, it's a plant, it's Citrus Fair." So if you're going to a fair, you can typically expect to see a carnival, animals, really good food and maybe some great entertainment. But the one thing that I love most about fairs, except, well, other than the corn dogs, I would say, is that they are all unique to their particular community. And your fair, the Citrus Fair, is unique in that it's only one of two citrus fairs in California. Its heritage stems from the celebration of the citrus crop that was once abundant here in this area. And the fair's history has been preserved over the years through the amazing citrus exhibits on display at the fair created by some very, very talented community groups and individuals. Fairs are in fact a reflection of their community's growth and progress, their history and heritage, they provide educational inspiration for youth, family entertainment, livestock and 4H, which are, you know, supportive of California's very vibrant agricultural sector. In addition, community talents are showcased here through artwork, baked goods, photography and so many other handmade crafts on display at the fair. But in addition to hosting the fair, because everybody always asks me, okay, so now that the fair's over, what do you do? Well, we actually host many events throughout the year and manage the facility. So one of the events that the Citrus Fair staff actually hosts and our team oversees is the San Francisco Chronicle Wine Competition. And each January, over 65 of the top wine judges from the nation are welcomed into Cloverdale, they stay here for about a week and they taste amazing wine. The event is now 35 years old, started here as the Cloverdale Wine Competition and it's grown to one of the largest wine competitions in the nation, something we should be very, very proud to still host. And this year, we had 7,000 entries, which is pretty amazing. So you can imagine a lot of wine is going on in these rooms. The Citrus Fairgrounds is also host to Cloverdale Ag Day, which is a very important ag education program that we offer to students in the community, as well as the Cloverdale Old Time Fiddle Festival, which has had roots, deep roots in this community for over 40 years. Also on a year-round basis, we rent the facility for hundreds of events from, ranging from weddings and quinceañeras to fundraisers, school functions, private parties, trade shows, festivals, basically you name it, we are the event facility for this community. And surrounding communities, we see a lot of event rentals from Hopland, Yucaya, down to, you know, Windsor, Hillsburg. The Citrus Fairgrounds provides, also provides many nonprofits an opportunity to fundraise through their events here. Fairs are also a large financial contributor to both local and state economies and based on a recent economic impact study done in 2015, over 70,000 people came onto this facility for an event at the fairgrounds, generating a total spending impact of over $4.7 million. So the facility also generates business tax revenue through the collection of state and local taxes, transient occupancy taxes, possessory interest taxes, et cetera. But most importantly, I would say, is the role that fairgrounds play during emergencies. And the Citrus Fair and so many other California fairgrounds have been used as a place for refuge for the community, as well as used by emergency services, agencies for emergency staging in time of need. So looking ahead, we have a lot of exciting things to look forward to. The board and staff are continually working to enhance the facility and the services that we offer. We're currently working, we're currently underway with several facility improvement projects and plan to continue doing upgrades each year. Year-round, we will continue to welcome our RV camping program, we also do monthly RV storage, we will be enhancing our outreach and marketing to hopefully bring in some new and interesting events for the community to enjoy. And of course, plans have already begun for next year's fair and our goal with every fair is to provide a great opportunity for family entertainment, for the community to gather and show off their talents and educational opportunities. So, you know, we're really looking to, we plan to preserve our rich history here at the Citrus Fair, but also bring in new and exciting programming so that we can keep things fresh and new. And so stay tuned, our theme for the 2019 fair will be announced very soon. And I'm very, very excited to be your CEO, I've been here for about six months now, I come from the Sonoma County Fair in Santa Rosa and I live here in Cloverdale, so it's so nice to be able to be spending more time here in this community, which I'm loving. And of course, I welcome suggestions and input from the community, door is always open, email, phone, or would love to meet you in person. So I hope to see you at the fair or one of our events here throughout the year, thank you.
The last guy. My name is Robert Redner and I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Cloverdale Historical Society. Quick history quiz here and I'd like you to raise your hand if you know the answer, but don't shout it out. Do you know who founded the city of Cloverdale? Who knows that person's name, raise their hand. One guy here knows who founded your town, his name's James Kleiser, there's a park right next to the high school that's named after him. And you can find that out by going to our museum and going through the records. Okay, part of this is, how did we get here? This is our 50th anniversary for the Cloverdale Historical Society and consequently, we've come from basically the beat-up Gould Shaw House and a kind of a crummy-looking garden to a phenomenal building that was completed in 2009 and also a complete revamping of the Gould Shaw House. And for those of you that don't know where the museum is, we're across the street from the La Hacienda Mexican Restaurant. I find a lot of Cloverdallians don't know where we are. The big building was built in 2009 and that was done through grants and donations. Most of you or maybe know or don't know, we operate on a very small budget and under a very small grant, so we need to constantly fundraise and solicit for donations in order to keep your museum up and running. And this, you have to understand, this is your museum, it's not, you know, this is Cloverdale's museum and I invite you all to come and visit. We've revamped the garden, we've redone the lighting, it's a beautiful place to come and sit and relax and just enjoy the outdoors. What's coming next? I'm trying to get this going here so you can go and see the game. In the next two to three years, we plan on doubling the events that we have. We've previously put on the Speaker Series, I'm sure some of you have attended those events. We do the annual spring tea, we're looking forward to in the next two years, we're talking about doing a fall tea, we're talking about doing two or three different exhibits, one being Hispanic cultural exhibit that will be coming up. We are in the process of seeing if we can do another Pomo Indian exhibit and we're in the process of seeing if we can come up with an exhibit for the students here at the high school and the college, or junior college, junior high school. Other than that, I don't have much to say about our museum, other than it's phenomenal and it's a totally underutilized resource in our town. And once again, I invite all of you to come and visit. History is something that's really boring to most people until you want to find something out. But also you notice at 12:01 tomorrow morning, this whole event's going to be history, okay? And this relates to all of us, right? History can influence us in many different ways. And in fact, tonight, and I haven't heard anybody mention this, it's the 74th anniversary of the day that a group of young guys and women got on some boats and they got on some planes and they went for a little cruise. And for the next 24 hours, the fate of the free world was in their hands, okay? They called it D-Day. And it's something that we, it seems as America's gotten older and times gone by that they have, you know, that's been forgotten. But that gives you an idea of how history can influence you, just as heavily as us getting a new fire chief or a new police chief or a new mayor or a new superintendent. All these things are history and they all involve you. I invite you to come and visit the museum, it's a wonderful place. If nothing else, go to the plank, get a cup of coffee, come on over, sit in the garden, listen to the fountain and please enjoy this resource, because it's a resource, because it is yours, all right? Thank you very much. One last word before I shut up. In the words of Winston Churchill, "We cannot predict the past, but the future does give us hope." Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I'm sure you have a few questions, this is the chance to come up, we have a microphone right there. Would anybody like to ask anybody on the panel any follow-up questions or any comments? This is an opportunity to do that. Certainly you have another opportunity to reach out directly to any of them at another date, as you think of things over the next few days, but if you have any questions or anything you would like clarification on, this is an opportunity. Well, seeing, sir, please come on up and just, if you don't mind, just state your name and ask, I just ask that you identify who you would like to direct your question to.
My name is Joaquin Espinoza, I live at 229 Red Mountain Drive in this great city of Cloverdale. I want to thank all the presenters for their efforts this evening. My question is directed at Mr. Kelly. I drive through Cloverdale and I've been doing this for a number of years and I pass the West America Bank Building and it's still empty. I know that someone has bought and plans to develop the building. Where do we stand with this and what is the city doing about it?
Thank you for that question, that's a great, that's a great question. The building I believe you're referring to was originally or historically known as the Cloverdale Bank, located on the corner of Second Street and the Boulevard. That particular commercial space is owned by Mr. Ken Wilson, Ken is kind of notably the owner of Wilson Winery. We have been working with Mr. Wilson on redevelopment plans for that building. What he would like to do is a wine tasting slash deli at the, in that space. We've encouraged him and supported him in the submittal of building plans, which he's indicated he's hired an architect for the interior improvements or the tenant improvements for the space. But one of the things that we tried to do to really support the future development of the property was the council considered a license agreement for redoing the outside, the frontage area, the sidewalk for outdoor dining. He did submit a plan to the city staff and city council for review and that was approved. We actually issued an encroachment permit for, to Mr. Wilson to perform that work. But we also understand he's got a lot of land holdings in the county and elsewhere and is a fairly busy individual with a lot of projects going on elsewhere, but I can assure you, we check in with him quite frequently and encourage him to move forward because we'd really like to see that building space occupied and as someone who enjoys wine, it'd be a great place to be able to go head over after a long day at City Hall and have a nice beverage. I hope that answers your question.
Well, does the city have the authority to put a timeline on Mr. Wilson?
That's a great question. We probably do, we really have taken a collaborative approach and trying to support him moving forward, but we haven't, we haven't, you know, tried to utilize a heavy hand to say you have to do it within a certain timeframe.
Well, I do hope that this thing progresses because it's been in that state, as far as I can see, for four or five years. And we're not any further along, so I encourage the planning department and the city council to put a bug under Mr. Wilson's butt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up comment on that, Mr. Wilson has put a considerable amount of money into the building, it was seismically unsafe, he's gone in there and the whole building's been redone, so he has been working on it for several years. It's at a point now where it's ready and we agree, he needs to move forward with his project, so, but thank you for that comment. Yes, come on up to the mic, please.
Good evening and thank you again for all your presentations, I learned a lot. My name is Kay Wells, I live in Clover Springs, I've been here 20 years. In fact, I was the first resident of Clover Springs.
Really?
It was very spooky. Anyway, my real concern is nighttime lighting in this city, I guess for Mr. Kelly, this would be, it is always a very dicey driving at nighttime from downtown back towards Clover Springs. There's a median there that I almost hit every time because there are no reflector lights on it. And one day when I, one night when I was walking down opposite, the street opposite the Performing Arts Center, there is no light. I almost broke my neck on a two-inch discrepancy in the sidewalk because it is totally dark. There are so many blocks in this city which are totally dark. It's amazing that more people aren't mugged on these blocks. Fortunately, that does not seem to be a big problem in this town, but wow, if this... were San Francisco, people would be mugged there constantly. But it's really a hazard to try and even walk down these sidewalks in the total dark. Is there any plans to upgrade the streetlight lighting or add additional lighting, whatever? It's scary, this town is scary at night.
Yeah. That's a very good question. Just as background, you know, street lighting is something that isn't easy for cities to install because it does require that we have a revenue source to fund that ongoing, you know, electricity associated with the lighting. But with that said, I do encourage you to bring that to staff's attention. Certainly, we always try to be proactive in addressing, you know, particularly if there's a safety issue. We have a number of committees at City Hall that look at a various wide array of issues, from public works to planning to airport to police. And one of the, I think the appropriate subcommittee is our Public Works Subcommittee. They routinely take up issues of residents that are concerned about particular public works issues, whether it be stop signs, red curb painting, you know, sidewalk areas that are in need of repair. And that's something that, you know, there's a number of areas that need to be brought to our attention throughout the city. So if, you know, I'd encourage you to contact myself and I'd be happy to support bringing that issue forward so we can look at proposed solutions. One of the things we've also tried to do is really proactively identify where there are existing streetlights. You know, sometimes those bulbs do burn out over time, trying to make sure we, you know, it doesn't always just immediately come to the attention of city staff, so you're our eyes and ears and when you see a streetlight out, you get it reported to us. You know, we endeavor to get those replaced as soon as possible. It is important to point out that we have a system here in Cloverdale of streetlights that are operated or maintained by Pacific Gas and Electric or PG&E. So we always have to coordinate with PG&E to determine whether it's our streetlight or theirs and make sure that repair gets undertaken. So we can certainly look at options for, you know, addressing the streetlight concerns.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. And our deputy city clerk is right in the back, right over there. Linda, could you raise your hand? Would you please make sure you leave your name and contact information with her so we could follow up and get a clear understanding of the location? Yeah, if you could just leave it right there, there she is, right back there. And we'll follow up with a phone call to you. Okay, would anybody else like to address, yes, please come forward, sir?
Good evening, my name is Jim Byrne and I live on 401-4 South Franklin Street, Apartment A. I moved here in 1979. In those days, I was lucky enough to find a place to rent, but I'm still in the same facility. My first, I'd like to thank you for sponsoring something like this because oftentimes, I know you have board meetings and all that, but some people can't make that and I think having everyone together was really valuable. In all the years I've been here, I've worked with youth, anywhere from kindergarten through high school and even continuation high school. And through those years, a lot has changed in Cloverdale as far as, especially the middle age and high school age youth. Way back then, before they had cell phones and computers and video games, it was a little bit easier, but even for kids to get to Santa Rosa Junior College, it was like they were going to Notre Dame. It was a big scare for them, a big challenge. And nowadays, of course, that's changed. But still in our town, because of being far away from other places, now that the skateboard park's coming, that's huge and I really am thankful that's, you know, at least getting closer. But one of the things that I also see unfortunately is that because of the way that the families have changed, especially in Cloverdale, there are kids that leave school each day and don't want to go home. And unfortunately, they can't all, for financial or other reasons, attend Boys and Girls Club, which I also work at. I've also been an employee of the school that took for thirty-two years. So I've kind of seen both ends. And what I'd like to ask all of you, so that's why I couldn't direct the attention to just one person, to consider possibly finding a way where this town could offer a place for kids to go so they feel they had a place to be. I could give you example after example of certain kids, without naming names, that some nights literally don't go home and wander the streets. And unfortunately, some of them have been arrested and have been on drugs and have gone to juvenile hall and have even had to leave town and go to other facilities because of the trouble they've gotten themselves into. Now, I'm not saying that that's the city's fault, please don't take this the wrong way, but I think that if we had a place that they could just be, they don't want to be at home. And we can't fix that, but at least rather than wandering the streets, they might have a place to drop into. Whether that be, one proposal someone mentioned was that, what if one night, each night, the seven days of the week, there was a place they could go? Maybe one night the movie theater offered a movie. Would everybody go? No. But some kids would say, "I can go to the movies." Maybe another night the Boys and Girls Club would stay open so that the gym could be used for recreational basketball or games or whatever, a pool, whatever we had to offer. Maybe another night, the school gym could be open when it wasn't, you know, wasn't needed for other sporting events, so kids could go and just hang out. Even if they didn't want to play sports, they could sit there with their cell phones or their iPads or we'd have some refreshments they could sit. Maybe some of the service clubs could sponsor those nights, because again, that doesn't come free. And again, they'd have to be supervised and I know there's, you know, either volunteer money involved with that. And there's also the idea of insurance, you know, I'm realistic about that. But I'd just like to throw that idea out to you to consider because even today, a young lady at school said, "I'm not happy tomorrow's the last day of school." She said, "'Cause now I don't, I don't have a place to go. I don't want to be home during the daytime, I want to be somewhere else." And they do, it's amazing, they don't want to be in school, believe it or not. When that bell rings, we're a lot of them hanging out. It's really interesting to watch. So thank you for listening to the idea, but I wish you'd kind of put that in your bonnet or under your hats and consider thinking about it because it really would help a lot of kids in this town, more than you know, because a lot of them don't have the money or the way to get to other things. And I'm not saying they're, you know, they're all poor, but they just don't have it. So if we could provide that for some of them, it may prevent some of the other things that they're directing towards as far as the drugs and the, you know, the ones that are in the cars that shouldn't be and the things that maybe they're doing that are poor choices, but with another opportunity, they might think twice. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And just a couple of comments, those are excellent ideas and thank you so much for sharing those. Just to give you just a real brief overview, we currently have an ad hoc committee together that's working on this very issue, especially dealing with the Boys and Girls Club and the ability to make sure all kids that want to be admitted can get into the club. Councilmember Gus Walter, who's in the back of the room, and myself are the council ad hoc, superintendent Jeremy Decker, our supervisor James Gore, and we have several other people within the community that we're meeting with the Boys and Girls Club staff. We've met, we've come up with a fundraiser approach to get more funds. The objective is that every child that needs a place to go can get in there and we're making some progress on that. But I think your ideas are excellent ones. How do we expand that into the evening hours? And that's something we'll continue to talk about, so thank you for that. Would anybody else, we have time for one more and then we're going to have to wrap it up. Come on up, please.
Good evening, my name is Loretta Antolini-Brocco and I've been in this town for over fifty years. My family, the Antolini and the Brocciolinis, we've been here over a hundred years. We used to own the valley where the freeway now took a piece of it and I own a property on McCray Road. And I have pictures that I wanted to give to you, Jason, because I have some concerns that concern not just us McCray Road residents, but the county and the city. In October, when the fire hit in Sonoma County, I happened to be pruning some of my back trees and all of a sudden I saw puffs of smoke going up in the park. And I said, "Oh, the city couldn't be doing maintenance in this park with what's going on." And thank God to Cal Fire, and I want to thank all of you for what you've done during the fire. In ten minutes, Cal Fire was there, but in another five minutes, that fire went from the park, through my neighbor's property and was marching up to mine. So my concern is, and it's kind of directed to you, Mr. Kelly, across the street from me, there was property that were going to be housing. And Mr. Chet Richardson owned the property and then it was Dan Aguilar, then it went into bankruptcy or whatever during the 2000s. Well, I have pictures that I want to give to you to show you what it looked like before when the Rapataro family kept that property neat and clean. And when I was reading the paper, I noticed how June 6th is the day you want to have weed abatement. Well, there's a lot of issues in that property. PG&E came and marked places, cut things down and threw them on the ground and I witnessed it and I said, "Aren't you going to take it away?" No. So now we have piles of dead brush all down the road to the entrance of the park, dead trees that hit the electrical wires and now they're hanging over the road. So if anything happens, any kind of fire, it's going to go into the park, it's going to go fly up and over that hill and it's going to hit downtown Cloverdale. So I want to know, who can I work with that I can show you what are my concerns on, I can give you my pictures tonight of my concerns, but it's a concern of the town of Cloverdale, the county, all of us. I mean, there is a major issue that no one is doing anything about that property except for a big for sale sign, that they don't even want to talk to me when I call them. The PG&E is supposed to call me back, they would have vegetation department, I can't get them to call me back because they, I visually watched them make that mess. But Mr. Richardson has let these trees grow, so, and brush. And all the neighbors of my end of the street, which is the dead end, the nice quiet end, we cut grass along the edge, I spray for weeds, we keep our back property short, but we need your help with Mr. Richardson to do something about that property and all that brush, because it is a concern I feel to everybody.
This is on McCray Road, right?
Yes, McCray Road.
So McCray Road's on the county?
Yes.
In the county area?
Yes.
We actually, a couple of years ago initiated, wrote the first county vegetation management ordinance and we used initially Fitch Mountain as a pilot area because we're having the same issue, which is not just derelict properties, but a place where people, one person's property rights or lack of responsibility was putting everybody at risk. So we've actually gone in there and red-tagged areas and done other things, but at the same time, we do have a chipper crew that's available, that's a free service from the county where we bring people in and come and do that. If it's a PG&E, I can also follow up with you and do it. So let me, before I leave, take your information and have myself and my staff kind of follow up with you because we're going to expand, I feel, that vegetation management program countywide now. It was a three-year pilot and really, we're going to be able to go and enforce at a better pace, so thank you.
I know that you have a lot of great folks with the county, because I have called them, I have their personal numbers. I am very close with Bill Trunick, the ranger for the park, I've worked with him for twenty years with scouts. But the county people told me they don't have time to deal with the chipper crew, you know, he came out, he looked and he left.
Well, I'm your...
So I want your contact.
Yeah.
And you did a great job with the fire.
I'll get it done.
Thank you.
So, I mean, that's my job. I'm your, I'm the complaint line, the glory line, the hate line, the everything, so, but you know, what's good is if you use my staff and myself, we can track something and make sure it gets done, so it doesn't have to be you trying to badger and not get anything back. We can do that, that's our job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're out of time. I just want to say, if you have any remaining questions, maybe after we're done, you can contact whoever you have a question with, but if you don't have that time, you can always get ahold of us through email. I just want to say, I've had the pleasure of working with everybody up here and I got to say, you got to be aggressive and continue and I want to thank all of you, I really appreciate. I love working with them, we've accomplished a lot together and we've got a lot more on our plates, we're going to continue. I just got to tell, again, the supervisor Gore in the county, we've got several great things going on right now and I got to say, he stays on top of it. The one thing, we're all working in partnership, collaborating with the school district, the county and the city is on our swimming pool. It's owned by the county, but we're working together to get that swimming pool heated. That's a big deal for the kids in this county and we are working together and I thank supervisor Gore, he's been a leader in helping make that happen through the county. We are going to get there, it's by 2019, it's our goal, that pool will be heated for the next swim season. So that's all good. So with that, I just want to thank all I speak, all the speakers for making this time, for being here and we are adjourned here and thank you.